Evening everyone. We are here for the March 5, 2024 meeting of the Ontario School Board. And we're calling the meeting to order now at 5:30. We have a tobacco policy in place. There is no smoking within 100 feet of any school building. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District Clerk, will you please call Raul? Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Yeah.
Trustee Goodrich?
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Here.
Trustee Story?
Here.
Trustee Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to meet with our attorney, to discuss a contract and also to discuss the tenure and employment of specific employees. Trustee Ramondo first. Trustee Mitchell Morrell second. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. We will be back in about 90 minutes.
May I have a motion to exit executive session and return to public session? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Ramondo. All in favor? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. We're moving on to item three, and that is our welcome from our middle school principal, Mr. Dedana.
Hi, everybody. Hi again. Is this on? No. Hello. Hi. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you again. Welcome.
Would any board trustees like to move to an auditorium seat to watch the PowerPoint, or would you rather just sit here and use your printed copy? Okay, we'll stay. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. So, we had a wonderful turnout for the fifth grade parents coming up a few weeks ago. I expected ten or twenty, and I think we had between fifty and seventy. It got pretty busy. I did not have enough cookies. That's all I know. I ran out of cookies. But it was a wonderful turnout. I will share the PowerPoint that I did with the parents. They had a lot of questions. I spent probably a half an hour answering questions. Many of those we still need to answer as we move forward. We're getting there, but we're not quite there yet. There's just a couple loose ends that we have to tie up for the fall. I'd say most of it is done. And then I took them on a quick tour so they would see where their children would be every day. Explained the bathroom situation, the cafeteria situation, the hallway situation, our philosophy behind how we set up the building for next year. And again, emphasizing that, you know, this is, there are going to be some bumps in the road. There are going to be things that they need to let me know what is working and not working so that we can fix them. I mean, this is an ongoing process. We think we have everything figured out, but as you know, life happens, and, you know, we're willing to roll with the punches and do what we need to do to make, give them the best opportunity they can at, you know, their education. So, they were very happy to hear that. We are really focused on, and let me do the PowerPoint because a lot of what I'll talk about is in there. So, I did an introduction. We'll talk about our primary goals of what the transition committee did. We'll look at a timeline, and then I'll kind of summarize everything that we did moving forward. So, we ascended, we assembled a transition team. We had, we had my cabinet, which consists of four people in the middle school, one from each grade level, one from special ed, one from languages. We had a guidance counselor, director of guidance, Sarah Turk, and we had my secretary, Tori Sommer, as well join us. We also had a representative from Bennett come down. Mr. Kelly Downs came down, and he was fantastic. Felt like we had a good communication between the two of us. We would email as often as we needed to. He's very responsible, and, you know, he was really conduit by which the sixth grade team communicated with me. So, that has been fantastic. You know, we also had central administration join us for several meetings. Stephanie Laffin and Amanda Allison also joined us for a few meetings when they could. So, it was very productive, a great team, the right size, and we were able to get a lot of feedback from everyone involved, including parents. So, that was very good. As you know, previously I had met with the Bennett PTA. I had had other meetings where I had gone up to speak with the sixth grade teams as well. So, there had been a lot of communication, a lot of feedback coming back, going back and forth. So, we're getting there. We're almost there. Now, our primary goal was to create a welcoming atmosphere for the children, first and foremost. Make sure it's safe. Make sure they could have everything they need. Make sure they can really assimilate right nicely into, into the middle school. We are offering, we had a lot of ideas from a lot of different teachers and staff and parents about what we would offer them. We feel that we've come up with a good curriculum We really looked at the building and how to optimize, how to, you know, keep those kids so there wasn't a lot of mixing with the high school, especially with the sixth and seventh grade. And then we looked at staff, and we're still looking at staff now, but we're just about there in the programs that we're offering, including all of the extracurricular activities that we have for the sixth grade. And I made this focus with the parents, that the secret to change is to focus all your energy not on fighting the old, but on building the new. And that's what we did as a committee. We didn't sit there and hem and haw about why we're changing. It's not, we just looked at what we're going to do moving forward. How are we going to make these kids feel comfortable? How are we going to give them the best education? How are we going to prepare them the best for high school? You know, that's the ultimate goal, is to leave high school as prepared for life as you can, although we all know eighteen years old. We might feel like adults at eighteen, but we, you know, but get them as prepared as they possibly can get. And, and I feel like we do a great job here. I do, just from my two years of being here. So, these are our considerations. We considered how classrooms would look. We considered remodeling, which is now not going to happen for, I believe, till the following summer, but those plans are still there. We had Meteor come in today, the furniture company, and do some final measurements of rooms, so we will be outfitting some of the sixth grade classrooms with new furniture, so that'll be great. So, that had a lot to do with the classroom configuration and where they'll be. Scheduling, we will go over what a schedule looks like. I have a copy of this in here, so you'll get to take a look at that. Spent a lot of time on our special ed programs, what's the best way to deliver our special education, worked with Amanda Allison and Cal Grima and all the special ed departments to really come up with a good program for six, seven, and eight. And again, you know, education is always evolving. It's always changing, and, you know, we try to work together to accommodate that change. Communication, we've done a lot of communicating, especially within the staff and, you know, the parents. I felt like, you know, that many people showing up to a parent meet, a parent night was, was a great, a great step forward in getting communicating. I've also communicated using Shout Point. We'll continue to do that moving forward. And then implementation, which will be our moving this summer. So, that's our, that's really the last hurdle. How do we get them packed up? How do we get them moved down here? You know, make sure, because all the rooms have to be cleaned first, so it's not just throw all your stuff into a classroom. There's a lot of logistics that need to be looked at as we plan this move this summer. So, our timeline, so we've been meeting with the transition team since September, November. We started putting together an initial plan in December. I got a lot of feedback from middle school staff, fifth, sixth grade teachers, central administration. We have delivered the plan. It's ready to go. You know, the, as you see, the schedules are ready, and we're just making those last personnel decisions and all that, which central administration will be, will be a big part of that as well. And then, over the summer, we will implement this move, and we will be making sure that everything's in place, you know, to go at the end of August. Again, the classroom configurations, we really wanted to keep the sixth grade and seventh grade together as close as they can. They're coming up together. They're used to being together, so it's a nice way. So, if you, you know the building, the main middle school hallway building will be all sixth grade and seventh grade. They will have their own bathroom, which high schools are not allowed to go to. We are moving the language teachers so that they are at the end of the hall, so they won't have to go into the high school around the corner. Mr. Edelman and I have been working together to rearrange the classrooms to make it, you know, keep the middle school really contained in two hallways. The eighth grade will all move down to the hallway closest to me, which is this first hallway right past the desk, so you'll have your, everything except science, you'll have math, social studies, and English right here in this front hallway with the eighth, and that's really where you see most of the traffic with the high school coming around the corner, going to lunch, going in and out of the music departments using the guidance office. So, you know, the eighth grade, we felt that was a good place for them. So, you know, we really tried to take into account, you know, not having, you know, the bathrooms was a big one. You know, we really wanted to make sure that they were safe in the bathrooms, that they weren't having to see things that younger kids that age shouldn't be seeing. But we also wanted to make sure that, you know, teachers, they were close to their teachers, their lockers were close to their teachers, so, you know, they need help, they're all right there. So, you know, the teachers do a great job of being out in the hallway every period, so that's really a positive with the middle school. Every teacher comes out, so the hallways are very, are, are great, I mean, better than I've ever seen, so. So, here's a typical schedule, again, not the order that it's going to be in. They get two sections of ELA. Typically, one is writing, one is reading. We are teaching social studies as a full peer, as a full class. We are getting, you should be getting a social studies and science books to come up to be approved by the board over the next couple of months, so we're pretty close to approving social studies and science. Science will just be a continuation of the one that you approved last year for the eighth grade, same series, social studies. The seventh and eighth grade teachers don't really, they have so much information, they're veteran teachers. They, they know how to use the textbooks that they have, so we're just going to be ordering ones for sixth grade for the upcoming year. We have phys ed, and we have brain power boot camp, which is an executive functioning class, so teaching them how to study, teaching them how to stay organized, teaching them basics in typing and Microsoft Word, all those things that they've been taught before, but continue to need to be reinforced over and over. I mean, you know, we realize, at the age of these kids, we realize there's still a ton of learning to do. So, Mrs. Grimm has put together this class, which has a little bit of everything. Also, some SEL work is also going to be in there. How do you get along? How do you work in groups? So, I'm very excited about this. There'll be a little keyboarding in there as well, and also how to study. You know, you have a test. She'll have all the sixth graders. She'll be able to, you know, to work very closely with the sixth grade teachers to address concerns that they, that may come up in the middle of the year. Lunch and recess, they'll be at the same time as seventh and eighth, but they will flip-flop their recess. So, seventh, sixth grade will have recess first, first twenty minutes, and then seventh and eighth will do it the second twenty minutes, so that they have their own space in the gym. Math will be the sixth grade curriculum, science will be the sixth grade curriculum. They'll be in a science room with the big science lab tables, so we're excited about that. Getting a new board, so she'll have brand-new technology in that room this year, so we're excited about that. And then we have our, you know, extracurricular, we can say, library, music, health, art, ten weeks of each, so they will rotate through those ten-week sections. Library will really focus on research, online research, proper internet usage, AI, all that type of stuff. She's actually going to some conferences coming up about that, and we also have Wes from Bosse's who works with us very closely. So, we're very excited to get kids how to do a presentation, how to use proper websites, you know, how to make sure that it's, that it's true. Health, Mr. Rushford will be teaching sixth grade. He'll be able to get everything in, because ten weeks, and honestly, they have it every other day. In eighth grade, it's not enough time to get through the whole curriculum, so we're excited that he'll be able to do that. And of course, art, a very creative subject, which I think is very important, so. And then our band, chorus, orchestra. We will intersperse AIS throughout where we need it. We have the staff to do it. We're very excited about that. We just started scheduling today, in fact, for the middle school for next year, so we just did eighth grade today. You'd be surprised how long that process takes to get rid of all the conflicts and make sure every child gets what they need. And then, so that's going to be a typical sixth grade schedule. Self-education programs, we're going to keep the self-contained program in sixth grade as it is now. They will have CT classes in sixth. I believe it's two in each subject, math, science, social studies, reading and writing. Seventh and eighth will be, seventh will, eighth grade will have, based on the needs of the kids, again, we did this based on the needs of the kids. Eighth grade will, this year, have intensives in all four core areas, science, social studies, math, and English, where seventh grade will just be in math and English.
Mr. Dedana, just for the newer board members, could you just explain what CT is and what intensives are?
A CT is when a special ed teacher, cooperating teacher goes in and co-teaches with the, the regular teacher, the core teacher, the math teacher, the science teacher. An intensive class is when a special ed teacher who is certified in that subject, English, math, science, or social studies, teaches a smaller amount of kids with typically a teaching assistant. So, it's a smaller class with a certified special ed teacher in that area, which I think we've, we have, so we're very excited about that. But this model really offers us a lot of flexibility to move back and forth. We're able to move kids in and out of intensives, and, and from intensives to co-ta, or cooperative teaching models, so we're, we've, we're designing the schedule, so there's a lot of movement between, if needed, during the year. So, if a kid starts to do really well, we can move him. If he doesn't, we can move him, so we have a lot of flexibility with the schedule, and I'm really concentrating on trying to make sure those changes can happen easily and not upset the whole day. Extracurricular activities, book club, science olympiads, art club, rocket club, intramurals. We're still working on the details with intramurals, again. Field space, gym space is limited because of the, this, we have two schools, and then we have many different sports teams, so we're hoping to run a fall and spring ten-week session for the sixth grade. There's been a lot of talk about not, you know, keeping it sixth grade, because they don't want it to take away from sports in seventh and eighth grade, which is, is a valid point, but we're still discussing that. Robotics will be year-round. Mr. Sanders will be teaching robotics this year, student council. Homework help is every day, or four days a week. Music is the one we're still, we still have to meet on to determine exactly what that's going to look like, so I don't want to say that we have that figured out yet. We're still working on that. It's the one, one of the last pieces. Yearbook club, we have chess club, we have the drama production in the fall, and we have the toughs. So, we have a lot of stuff for these students to do, really. We have more stuff to do than we do students, I would think, so. The communication, again, I've kind of gone over this already, but we had a great team that communicated with the whole staff, communicated with parents, communicated with the sixth grade staff. Gabe and I and Stephanie met often. We discussed things that needed to be discussed, so that was a great communication, working with central administration. You know, it's really been a nice, calm transition from my point of view, because everybody's been really easy to work with. You know, parents, even having the Bennett PTA come down was really such a positive experience, that I just think that we're just going to have such a positive year next year, based on, you know, everybody has heard everything. There's not going to be any surprises next year, so we're really looking forward to it. And then, just some of the implementation things, our mural design will be going up in a couple of weeks over spring break. It's going to be started. We've been looking at the flow of the building, lunchtime, the recess, we've figured that out, how to make sure all sixth grade and seventh and eighth get their recess. Is it going to look a little different? Yes, but they are going to get exercise, they are going to get fresh air, but it'll, it'll look a little different, it'll look a little more middle school than elementary school, but, you know, they will have, you know, have the ability to have recess every day. We've really looked at the focus of resource and what the needs of our kids are, and really we came up with the executive functioning, with the, you know, learning how to study, having that really, being able to, to study for, you know, a longer time, be able to read for a longer time, being able to use the internet in the right way. Really, a lot of those little things that kind of get lost, but we really, we created that brain, brain power boot camp to address those needs. That was something that came from the teachers, so we're really excited about that. And then, our next, our next big part is the move, meeting with building and grounds, figuring out how we're going to get everything moved down, when it needs to be done, so we'll be working for the next few months, just getting ready for the summer. I mean, I can't believe it's March, I already told you the truth, it's been a quick year. So, you know, just in summary, we've, you know, we've listened to everybody, we've made decisions that are student-centered, I mean, that is always in the forefront of my mind when making decisions, you know, and again, there'll be some bumps next year, and we will deal with that as they come along, and work together to solve that. You know, it's really been a team approach to this transition, so very happy about it.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Principal Dedana? Trustee Goodrich?
So, are there any parents that couldn't make the, you know, the walkthrough, that maybe you want to have a different date for them?
We do. At the end of August, we'll have an open house for an entire day, where parents and students can come in, walk through, they can get their lockers, they can work on their combinations, they can walk their schedules. I'll be here, some of the teachers will be here, but yeah, we have a day, the last Wednesday of August before Labor Day, where all the parents, sixth and, fifth and, sixth and seventh grade students and their parents are invited to come in during the day. We open the building so that they can come in and walk around and talk to us.
So, one more question. So, you said you're still working out the music. So, just so I understand, we have, I don't know how many music teachers we have in high school and the middle school, and is there a separate music teacher for middle school, or?
No, the three music teachers are shared in the middle and high school, orchestra, band, and chorus.
So, now they're going to have another, another class?
Now, they're going to have another grade level, correct.
Or are they going to be stretched too thin? I guess it's a million other.
That's, again, I don't want to speak out of turn, because we're still discussing that. We're going to use all our resources the best possible way we can. I mean, if we need to bring someone down here to help do rotations for lessons, bring someone down here, we absolutely will. Again, that's central administration, and I, and teachers' union will all figure all that out. I mean, the music program is very important, and I made that very clear to the parents. I mean, we're going to do what's best for the kids, but we have to remember that our focus is academics, and that, you know, we are, these kids are the ones that were in first, second grade in the pandemic. They were home. They basically missed two years of school. We are giving them everything they need academically. We want them just as prepared as if they didn't go through the pandemic, so we have a lot of work to do in front of us. We will focus on music, but we will definitely focus on academics. We will focus on making sure these kids are reading on grade level, are doing math on grade level. We've been a lot of focus this year on that, and we're seeing good results with the seventh and eighth grade this year. So, yes, everything is important, but we, we also have to remember that that academic part is, is why we're here. Now, along with sports, along with the arts, along with the clubs, along with everything.
Thank you. Great presentation, and I love the Socrates quote.
Oh, thank you. Philosophy major.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
On to item 4.01, Assistant Superintendent for Business Monica Leclair will present the budget update.
Do you have a clicker or no? You're the clicker? Okay. I'm just having the clicker. Okay. Well, welcome. Here we are in March, so I will be presenting what we have so far, as far as the budget update. So, just the final tax levy limit calculation. You've seen this the last couple of meetings. This is the final of the final. It did go up a little bit. We had some adjustments based on the February aid runs that came out, that adjusted some of our exemptions, and so we're looking at a 3.65% tax levy limit, which would mean our maximum allowable tax levy for the 24-25 school year would be $48,739,652. So, that is what was certified by our superintendent just last week, so. So, moving forward, so how much is our school budget this year to fund everything that we have right now? So, currently, our budget is $61,322,550. So, where is that money coming from? So, as you can see, our tax levy and some other miscellaneous tax items, like our pilot, made up forty seven, a little over forty-seven million of that. State aid made up a little over 10 million of that. Our others made up about 660,000, and we appropriated 3, 3,270,000 from fund balance, so that gave us our $61,322,550. And as you can see at the bottom, the other is our interest, our Bosse's refund, inter-fund transfer, and, and other miscellaneous revenues. So, as you can see, as a percentage, the taxes makes up about 81%, and our state aid is, is a little over seventeen and a half, and that other is, you know, a 1.1%. So, now, looking at next year, taking the governor's run- So now looking at next year, taking the governor's runs into account and the, the tax levy limit that I just presented you, we are looking at the tax levy and pilot revenue of just under 49 million, or $48,812,773. State aid will be reduced to 7.2 million roughly. Other is slightly higher at $715,000. I'm fingers crossed that we'll continue to see some interest income. Bit of a, bit of a risk, but I think we'll be okay. And then continuing to use that 3.2 million of fund balance. So we are looking at revenue of $60,35,568. So if you look at the pie chart, we have now 86% of our revenue coming from taxes and only 12.8% coming from state aid. So that is what would happen if the governor's budget for first state aid did come to fruition. So, question, I know we've talked about this, but, you know, it's always good to reiterate and, you know, I love to talk budget. Why did we lose so much money? So as we spoke about, the foundation aid formula has not changed in 2007, 2008. We've been in a save harmless situation due to our declining enrollment and increased poverty wealth. So had the foundation aid formula run the way it was supposed to, we would actually have already seen a reduction of 6 million. We would have been losing every year since 2007, '08, a portion of our foundation aid at, so that where at this point, we would have lost a total of 6 million. So the governor's budget, he's, she's like, oh, I guess I won't make you lose all of it. So she's only taking away 50% of that, so the little over 3 million. So why did the state take our money away? Well, the state's formula does not view Antioa as a high-need school. I think we, most of us disagree with that, but unfortunately, the state looks at this. And if you look at this chart, you can see Antioa kind of towards the bottom, our change of enrollments. In 2007, '08, we've had the highest decrease in enrollment of any school in Ulster County. If you look at our combined wealth ratio, our combined wealth ratio is more than double, no, not quite, not quite double the next highest, which is round out at 1.3. We're at 2.46, or not quite double that. The interesting thing to note is our free and reduced population went from 25.6% to 48%. So while we have the wealthiest, well, considered the wealthiest district by the CWR ratio, we are the third, no, second, third, third highest for free and reduced. So very different numbers than you would think. And then our L is just kind of within line with everyone else. So what's affecting our budget for next year? So we're looking at increased costs because of inflation. We're looking at a loss of the ARP grant. As I mentioned, 20% of that ARP grant must be used for learning loss, which it is. But that's a million dollars that is, we're using for learning loss that we now have to either find in our budget for next year or we have to reduce. We have collective bargaining agreements that are up. We also recently awarded the transportation contract. We have an increase in retirement costs. We have an increase in health insurance benefits. And we especially have an increase in retiree health insurance benefits because we have 13 faculty retirements this year. So looking at where we are currently for our 24-25 budget, what I project is a just over $62 million budget for 24-25, $998,000 increase, or just over 1.6%. As you can see, certain areas we were able to decrease. General support, instruction, again, thank you to the retirements, and debt service, because if you remember, the board approved for us to pay off our debt on the EPC, the Energy Performance Contract. That then allowed us to save money moving forward. We don't, we don't have those debt payments anymore. Unfortunately, they were offset by the increases in mostly employee benefits, which isn't surprising, that kind of happens every year, and transportation, which again, we discussed at the last meeting, and operation maintenance because of utilities and that. So some belt tightening that was done in this budget. So we, as I mentioned, prepaid the debt for the EPC project. We also are budgeting to prepay for the BOSI's debt. That will help, help with next year's budget. We are absorbing as many of the retirees through attrition where possible, meaning we aren't replacing them unless absolutely necessary, and we're looking at each one very closely. We are also not replacing a TA resignation that we just currently had. Again, rather than replacing and having to lay somebody off, we're making do with what we have. And we're also reducing unutilized stipends, so stipends that haven't been used, we are taking out of the budget. But somehow, the budget still has to balance. And at this point, we have an expenditure budget of 62 million and a revenue budget of 60 million. So that means we are, drum roll please, $2.2 million short. So what can we do? Or I should say, what are we doing? Because we've been talking about this for so long. I feel like, you know, we've, we've never stopped doing this. So we can look for further reductions, which, which we are. We could use more than the $3.27 million of fund balance, though I hesitate to do that because our fund balance is like our savings account. Once you start taking money out of your savings account for your living expenses, then you need it every year. And at some point, your savings account is going to be zero. So while it's a, while it can be a good one-time fix or one-time kind of aid, you really need to make sure that is not something that occurs year after year. We could potentially exceed the tax cap. Again, it's very difficult for schools in New York State to exceed the tax cap. You would need 60% approval by the voters. There are very few schools since the inception of the tax cap that have been able to exceed the tax cap. And our other hope is the restoration of all, or at least some of our state aid. And I did include the link to the legislative action information that we had put out there. So if anybody, if anybody out in the listening world wants to click on that, there's lots of great stuff there. So what's next? So March 19th, I will update the budget where, where I can. We will also have a capital improvement proposition for you all to, to approve. So I think I mentioned before, we're looking at taking out some of our money from our capital reserve to help us kind of offset some of those increases in the capital projects that we're currently doing. And also to kind of, to kind of act as a buffer, mostly for the high school generator project, because that one is, it had been budgeted to be, to be spent with ARP money. However, if we don't get the generator paid for by the end of September, we can't use ARP money to pay it. It's $620,000. I don't want us not to have a generator. Worst-case scenario, we would have this money in the capital reserve, the voters vote for it, we can use that money. We can then use that 620, because we'll know in advance, we'll use that money to fund other instructional items in the budget. April 1st is when the state budget is due. So fingers crossed, we get an on-time budget. If that is the case, and we have an on-time budget and we know where we are, the plan is still to have the superintendent's recommended budget to you on April 9th, at which point, April 16th, the board is scheduled to adopt the budget. If for some reason, we don't have a state budget, we have up until April 22nd to adopt a budget, or I should say, the board has up until April 22nd to adopt a budget. That is the last date that the board can adopt a budget. Unfortunately, if we don't have a state budget by then, we still have to adopt a, a school budget. So it's been a while. We've done it. I know Victoria and I have done it in the past. I don't know, 15, 18 years ago, something like that. It's been a long time. I might have to take out my notes to try to remember how we did it. But, and it's also the same day that the board candidate nominating petitions are due. So anyone that you know that might be interested, we'd need those petitions by that day as well. May 7th then becomes the budget hearing, and then May 21st becomes the budget vote. And just as a side note, Amanda had sent you all, I believe, the dates for the town presentations. I didn't put them on because I didn't have them yet, but, so we will, you know, if any, anybody on the board is interested in joining us. Victoria and I usually go. I think there's one, there's one presentation, Olive and Woodstock, that are on the same night, so we'll have to kind of split and see who wants to go where. You know, rock, paper, scissors, works every time. So with that being said, anybody have any questions? That way.
Trusty Lynch?
Thank you. Thank you very much for this preparation. Would it be possible for you to remind us tonight or in a, in a future email or communication about the, the fund balances for our reserves?
Sure, I can send that, I can resend that to you.
Just a, yeah, okay, an update for that. And then the other question I had was, you know, looking at the draft two expenses, you know, I'm obviously struck by the percentage of the transportation increase, which we've already discussed at length, and I understand why. But I'm curious, as we move forward, would it be appropriate to present the board with various scenarios? How do, how do we get to that? When you talk about tightening the belt and, you know, other things, how do we get to a place where we have more, you know, clarity or transparency about, again, I'm just trying to use your, the further reductions in terms of what can we do? Would you present us with scenarios, for example?
In transportation specifically?
Specifically, yeah. If we were to, I mean, because some of these other ones, there's not much we can do, correct? I mean, these are benefits, these are people's...
Well, and, and the problem, there really isn't much we can do in transportation either. So there are state guidelines as to how far a student can walk to a bus.
Okay.
Obviously, we have requirements based on IEPs and 504s where bus stops need to be.
Okay.
We have to transport all students that are enrolled in a private school if that private school is within 15 miles of their home. We're required to transport homeless students if they're within 50 miles of their, of their, you know, where they're, where they're homeless. We have to transport them back here. So there are a lot of things that even in transportation are out of our control. It's a budget. I mean, we budget for what we think. I mean, you need, you got to put in some wiggle room, because if we have a student that moves in, you know, or that moves in and needs to go to a, you know, a program in Warren, we've had one in way up north. We've had them way down south, and so we have to transport them. It's legally required by us. So we can look at our normal runs. Right now, it's hard because, you know, the other problem is it's, it's still a little early as far as we don't know where all the kindergartners live. So, you know, it's like, if we have, we have a kindergartner that's all the way up at that end of the district versus that end of the district. There are a lot of kind of nuances. I know that Nicole and Ray, they do look at it very closely. We might be able to tweak a little, but that is, I don't think we're going to get much out of that.
Okay. Okay, and can I have one more question? My other question was just, I remember last year, the governor's budget was pretty late. I think it came in May. And that, what did we do? I was here.
Well, so, so here...
What did you do in that scenario?
So going back, so we have, last year was probably the first time we hadn't had an on-time budget in a while. The difference with last year is the governor didn't change our state aid. We were in the hold harmless. So we were expecting the same amount of state aid. So as far as if we don't get a budget, I mean, you have to, I mean, if we don't get a state budget, we have to go with assumptions. And we can do something such, and I'm, you know, I'm not saying this is what's going to happen, but we could say, okay, you know, our budget's going to be this if we get this much state aid. So you, but if we don't, then we have to lay these people off. So you always want to, you want a budget to be the highest it can possibly be because you can't go over the budget. You can always go under your budget. So if our revenue isn't going to match what we think it's going to match, then we just have to look at corresponding reductions within the budget that was passed in order to meet that.
Okay, so just so I'm clear then, we would go on. If, if, God forbid, this budget doesn't come on time, we're in that same situation. It's past April 22nd. The budget you would all present to the board would be one based on the assumption of the governor's budget.
Of, as much as we know from the governor's budget. I mean, by then, we should have something from the legislature. You know, like, I mean, at least, at least a feeling, I would think, you know, if, if we're going to get anything back, even if we don't have a exact budget. Usually, we have at least a rough idea.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Trusty, no? Any other questions? Trusty Goodrich?
So thank you. Great presentation, a lot of detail, as always. Last time we met, you presented the transportation. And thank you for showing a difference if, you know, between, if we didn't close Phoenisha and if we, you know, since we did close Phoenisha, I think the transportation budget was reduced by 549,000. Almost a little over half a million dollars. Are there any other areas that you could break out when you, when we publish the, the newsletter with the budget so that the taxpayers can understand, you know, what was saved by closing Phoenisha?
Yeah, I mean, we can absolutely look at it, and it's part of, I don't, we haven't really discussed the newsletter as far as what's going to be in there, but we can, we can definitely look at that.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
We're moving on to item 5.01, acceptance of minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the February 20th, 2024 meeting. May I have a first? Trusty Jerome, second. Trusty Ramondo? We'll switch to roll call voting. Trusty Jerome? Trusty Mitch Morrell?
Aye.
Trusty Goodrich?
Aye.
Trusty Lynch?
Aye.
Trusty Ramondo?
Aye.
Trusty Story?
Aye.
Great, thank you, everyone. That's unanimous. And we are on to item 6.01, our superintendent's report.
Good evening. As the board knows, I attended the New York State Council of School Superintendent's Conference this week. We started on Sunday afternoon, and we ended this morning around noon. We had a session yesterday in which we were granted an audience with two members of the governor's staff. And because our, the moderator, who is one of the attorneys for the organization, NISCUS, because he knows that I'm very passionate and we are in a particular situation, he made sure to give me the microphone. So I was one of the individuals who was able to speak regarding both the EV bus mandate and the governor's proposed reduction to foundation aid and the elimination of the save harmless provision. And I absolutely implored them to provide districts in our situation with time to plan and to not just abruptly, I believe I used the word implode, our budget process. So at the end of our conference, as always happens, the closing session is the Commissioner of Education, who comes to speak with our, our group and brings a couple of her staff members. So she spoke to us for a considerable amount of time, which we always appreciate. Some of what she shared was on the topic of EV buses. And she has, she was just reiterating to us that she has heard consistent willingness from superintendents across the state to be compliant. But she has also listened and heard the real issues that we are having, and she is advocating with the governor to provide resources. She has asked the governor to provide additional staff for her at state ed to assist districts. The state aid proposal from the Board of Regents did not include this request for additional staff, but did ask for also a working group to be assembled to discuss the issues that districts are working to overcome. And she is encouraging the governor to bring this group together and invite superintendents from districts like ours to come and, and explain. from districts like ours to come and, and explain the challenges that we have and be a part of the discussion in how to solve them. The commissioner did note that she and her staff have been talking with the governor's office behind the scenes, but have not seen any movement to date. She is looking for ways to help with the upfront costs for districts, but she doesn't have a way that she can help us solve grid capacity, as she noted. But she has committed to absolutely continue to represent districts in these discussions. She also spoke about the Science of Reading and Literacy Initiative that the governor is bringing forward. She said that state ed's position is really just to start with early childhood standards. The message that she had provided to the governor was clear in that there is no curriculum in place for Science of Reading. State ed was also clear in not supporting any of the bills that had previously been forward, been brought forward, and is actually actively opposing bills that would be brought forward to implement, to insist on specific curriculums, because she wants to honor local control. So she is supporting districts and basically publicly opposing a mandate that would be put in place by people who are not experts. The commissioner believes that New York State educators need to have a voice in this work and that the state needs to work on other issues that may also be impeding the ability of students to succeed, such as housing issues. And then the commissioner did speak to us about foundation aid. She's advocating that the state can consider a three to five-year plan instead of this abrupt change in aid that has been proposed. You know, she reiterated 337 of our districts across the state are being impacted, rural, urban, and suburban. She's asked the governor's office to let the New York State Education Department work on a new formula instead of continually trying to tweak the existing formula. The commissioner's staff feel that possibly regionalization is the future outcome that the governor is hoping to achieve, and they are stressing the decline in enrollment statewide. And that they are expressing a concern that school districts will lose the ability to continue to provide opportunities for all students. State ed is trying to create a model for districts to look at this problem regionally. And the commissioner feels that regardless of this year's budget outcome, this challenge will remain for us to solve. She has asked for time for the leaders to have conversations and to make proposals that will actually support kids. State ed believes that, at least for the near future, the predictability that we all want with state aid will actually not be achieved. She advised that we should focus on the essential functions in each district and be really fiscally careful. And she committed to continue to advocate for the restoration of foundation aid, but obviously, she could not commit to what the results would be. So that was not all great news, but I do believe that this commissioner is very much interested in listening and advocating for school districts. So I appreciate that. I know that I have shared this with our elementary transition committee and with the board and other communications, but I needed to make sure everyone knew and understood that we have been having conversations for several months regarding our Summer Skills Academy. And we greatly regret to say that with the asbestos abatement work that is happening in all of our buildings this summer, in addition to the normal summer work, we do have to suspend our Summer Skills Academy for one year. This is not meant to be a permanent thing, and unfortunately, has happened infrequently, but in years past. So we certainly look forward to ramping it back up in the following summer. On the good news front, we have tentatively scheduled our community build for the Bennett Playground Edition for the weekend of Friday, May 31st, and Saturday, June 1st. As soon as we get more information, we will share it and get the word out regarding the opportunity to participate in this build. Those of us who built the playgrounds at Woodstock, Phoenisha, and Bennett the last time can attest to how positive it is and what a fun process it is to participate in. This weekend, I had the pleasure of attending the All County Elementary and Junior High School Orchestra Performance. Antioch was incredibly well represented, and our students did an outstanding job. Our own Erica Boyer is the chairperson this year, and her pride and passion for music education was really obvious. And she had, she had the great joy of having, introducing one of the guest conductors, who was one of her very first students. Next week on Wednesday, we have another Superintendent's Conference Day, and once again, there are a lot of incredible sessions planned. Some of them include a meeting of district-wide clerical staff to ensure consistency in all of our procedures, which is really nice, because those staff in particular rarely get time to meet together and often feel like they are not participants in our Superintendent's Conference Day. So it's nice to include them. Our reading faculty are meeting to review the state ed literacy briefs. Many groups are receiving CPR training. Our PE staff are participating in a district-wide inventory of PE supplies and equipment and planning for the transitions in September. And there are going to be many more sessions. And I started to list them, and then I realized I can't list them all, or we'll be here for another 10 minutes. So again, I wanted to make sure to say many, many thanks to Assistant Superintendent Laffin and the admin team for, once again, creating a day filled with really productive and valuable sessions. People don't want to be out of their classroom unless their time is spent really well. And I think that has been the case here for several years, and I really appreciate Assistant Superintendent Laffin's efforts. And one last thing, we are still looking and contemplating with our local districts what to do when we have the solar eclipse on April 8th. So I anticipate that in the next board meeting, we will have a recommendation. There are various districts taking various approaches to this solar eclipse. I know that one of our neighboring districts is purchasing glasses for students. One of our neighboring districts is planning on using an extra snow day. I know that we did reach out to our insurance company to inquire about if we were to purchase glasses, if they would advocate for that, and they said absolutely not. That is not something that they think would be a wise choice for a school district to do. And so we're going to continue to have discussions. But I just wanted to let everybody know that that is something that we're going to be bringing forward soon. And as of right now, knock on something, we have two snow days left. So hopefully, the weather will cooperate with us, and we will have options.
Thank you. Questions for the superintendent? Trustee Goodrich?
It's not a question, just want to say, again, great presentation, but sometimes I don't always remember everything you said. So a month later, you know, I go, wait, she said something about that. I just want to remind everybody, you can go back into the meeting minutes and from the previous board meeting and, and find out the news.
Yes, our illustrious district clerk, if I don't do it timely enough, will send me an email requesting that I copy and paste my news for her to include.
Trustee Jerome?
Oh, yeah. I'm curious about regionalization, just like, can you give a general definition of what that would mean? Or is that just a word that we're still, we're starting to use now?
I think that was just a word that is being introduced. And I don't know if it was strategically introduced, as in laying the stage for something, or if it was just the word they chose today, but that was definitely the word that they were using.
No surrounding information, just the word?
No, nothing. It, it, in our discussions, the way they, the way they do it for this conference is the commissioner and two of her senior staff members sit on the stage, and they have pre-planned questions. And then, you know, the three of them kind of answer in concert. But there was nothing, there were no additional, we were not allowed to provide questions to her. So, okay.
Anything else? Okay. Board district news? Do any trustees have news to report? Okay, I know probably during committee reports, we'll talk a little bit about our most recent legislative action. But one thing that I just want to say, especially after hearing our budget report and then hearing the superintendent's report about the NISCUS conference, is that we have really, the feeling that we're getting from meeting with our assembly persons and our senators is that they are all, all, all of the representatives who support our district, the towns in our district, are pushing back on the governor's budget. And so we have asked our community to reach out to their representatives. But when we recently met with Senator Hinchey, she recommended that we reach out to the governor, because the senators and the assembly men and women are on board to push back on this budget. So it would be really good for the governor to hear from us and our community.
Thank you for reminding me that. And I do know that you sent a request today that we add the governor's contact information to our advocacy page, so we will get that up probably tomorrow.
All right, so we did not have any public beheard comments from our, at our last meeting, and nobody is signed up tonight. However, we do encourage people to come and speak. We are interested to hear what you have to say, anytime. Item 11.01 is discussion of the draft 2024-2025 district calendar.
So there's a copy of the calendar for everybody to look at. Please note, the back is not fully completed. We don't have our marking period ending dates or five-week reports or report card dates on there yet. But the majority of the calendar is here. So we are looking at returning to school with a Superintendent's Conference Day on September 3rd, with our students returning on September 4th. The holidays fall a little oddly this year with the winter break. So we would have students and staff here on Monday, December 23rd. And then the break goes through Wednesday, January 1st. We would have just the five days for spring break and coming back on April 21st. Let's see, Thanksgiving, we would be closed the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving Day and close for Thanksgiving and the day following. We have our five conference days here in the calendar. We have eight snow days at this point. And we do need to figure out still when we are going to be holding the high school graduation.
Could you explain again why that's a question mark next year? Or this, yeah, next year?
Next year, it's actually interesting, because the regents go through, I believe, the 25th, and the state has made the 26th and the 27th rating days. Rating days for the grading. So I think we would assume that it would be Friday night, but we don't have that finalized yet.
Questions?
I just wanted to note that Sarah Lynch asked for there not to be all on Wednesdays, and I noticed you did that, so that's great. And there's mix it up for changing schedules. My other question is, isn't it standard to have less snow days? Or that's normal? Is it usually eight? Is it always eight?
We, it is not always a specific number. We try to get as many as possible, because, as you know, weather around here is unpredictable. We've had years where we have utilized up to, I believe, 11, in my experience.
I just wonder if it would make sense to do seven and then just give people that 23rd? Or is that not really an option? It's just like so weird to go to school one day.
It is very odd. It's not finalized yet, we're still working with the unions as well. But this is what we have for now, and, and we can continue to discuss that.
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, and thanks so much for opening this up for discussion. I think I want to just appreciate the change that Trustee Mitchell Morrell just mentioned as well. I look at this in the context of, as an elementary parent, and I think many of us all agree that it's tricky when you can't leave your children home alone, and you're depending on school to be able to go to work. And we've talked about this at length, I know. There's only so much we could do, but I wondered two things. One, I think the snow day is, is an interesting option, going, reducing the number of snow days. I also just wondered if there was consideration around the 27th of November, which is the day before Thanksgiving, if there was a reason that that was also, could we consider that as part of the, the shift? Because I know that that's a typical workday for most adults. So just curious if, if we lost the 27th, if we could gain the 23rd in December, how that would land with others. And the other question I had was about the parent-teacher conferences. Again, you know, some of us laughed. This past November, it was harder to get a spot with your teacher than it was to get like Taylor Swift tickets. It was really intense. There's really only about, you know, 10 hours or so that they have to hold these conferences. And many of these teachers have at least 20 kids, and sometimes they're offering to meet with other parents as well who see them for certain subjects. So the teachers are then put in a, in a situation where they are spending a lot of their daytime scheduling outside of parent-teacher conferences. And I'm just wondering if, if we could get their feedback on, on, on what would work best. But I know as a parent, it's really tricky to both have your kids home and try to meet with your teacher on the same day. So just curious if we couldn't rethink the parent-teacher conference meetings? Could that, could they be, you know, across a week? Or evenings, or what that looks like? Remote versus in-person? What, what other ways in which we could accommodate more families and teachers than to have just a day and a half in November, and that one day is when your kids are home? So just wanted to be thoughtful about that. And then the last question I had was just maybe a typo, but under the emergency closing days, the last one there, it said if there's more than eight days are used, the extra days will be made up as follows. And the first date says April 21. Okay, so that's just not, that, yeah, that didn't, I didn't understand, because it's not taken, it's not part of spring break, right? On April 21, okay. Okay, okay, great. Just wanted to flag it, thank you.
Trustee Goodrich?
So on the back, does it make sense to maybe also add the SAT and PSAT dates? Maybe not?
What was your response?
I was saying that's really more specific just to the high school, although we do have the subject-specific regents. So we can look at that.
Trustee Story?
I think what's important to notice is that this, the calendar is also made up around the BOSI schedule, that people have to remember that we have to have the same days off, because our BOSI CTE students need to have X amount of hours sitting in the classroom, so they can sit for certifications that they get at BOSI's. So that's why when we have, most schools do have that day off before Thanksgiving, that's why it's there, because the BOSI's kids, it's something that's important for the BOSI's kids to have a constant calendar for that, because you are dealing with eight different districts just in Ulster County, trying to get this calendar right and making sure our students are in the classroom as much as possible.
Trustee Jerome?
I know that it's, creating the calendar is very difficult and that snow days are, in no way do I ever want anybody on these roads in bad weather. That said, you know, being very aware that it's not only perhaps an inconvenience for some parents, but it also fractures the learning experience. My heart really goes out to those children who are learning calculus and maybe, you know, are skipping, you know, their classes are so, you know, interrupted that it makes that very difficult. And I just, you know, I want to point that out. I also want to point out that just using them so judiciously as we think about this, and I know it's a draft, right? But also thinking about the family time together, I think that's another thing that, when you look at that little hanger on Monday, you know, it's hard in our district because we do have such unpredictable weather, but if you do want to take a short trip with your family, it's also super important, and you want to do it in accordance with the school calendar. So just some other considerations as you do an impossible task of trying to organize the calendar.
Trustee Jerome, could you be specific about which Monday you're referring to?
Oh, I think, didn't you put, point that out? Trustee, yeah, December 23rd.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the calendar? So we're, at this point, we're just working, continuing to work on the draft. And do we have a BOSI's calendar?
We do have, yes, we do have a BOSI's calendar.
And that's what this is built off of?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And moving on to item 12.01, approving the consent agenda. May I have a first emotion? Oh, sorry.
I apologize.
No?
I approved schedule, or I reviewed schedule, and everything is in order.
Super. May I have a first to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Story, second? Trustee Jerome? Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay. We'll do roll call vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morel?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, and I think the superintendent would like to recognize...
I did want to recognize our latest hire, but I, I think maybe she's just left the room. But we were very excited to welcome her to our district, and also I wanted to make sure that we were recognizing the donations that we've been receiving. I was remiss last time and did not recognize them, but I want to thank sincerely all of the people who donate to our school and make it a better place.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome?
How do you donate to the school?
There's a page on our website that lists all of the ways that you can donate to our school. We can link it into the minutes in this section if you'd like.
Fabulous. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Gates? Do you have that link? Great. Thank you so much.
Before we move on to item 13.01, which is approval of contracts, may I have a motion to take a quick break? Trustee Goodrich, second? Trustee Lynch, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. So... All right, we are back from our break, and we are on to item 13.01, contracts and independent contract retainers. May I have a motion to approve all contracts and independent contract retainers? Trustee Story, first. Trustee Goodrich, second. Any questions or comments? All right. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morel?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Great. That's unanimous. Thank you so much. And we're on to item 14.01, and that is the first reading of policy 3210, Visitors to School. Do we have any questions about that? There wasn't anything that we needed to discuss about that, was there?
There's not really. This is just part of our ongoing initiative to try and make our buildings as safe as possible and also honor having visitors in our buildings, and this is edits that were brought forward in collaboration with Deputy Sharon and the administrative team to try and accomplish both of those things.
Right. And so we're not in a rush to...
No, we don't, we can, we can do the second reading and adoption at the next meeting, but we did want to get it moving forward.
Okay, great. And so item 14.02 is the second reading and adoption of policy 6110, School District Officer and Employee Code of Conduct. The Board hereby, the Board of Education hereby adopts policy 6110 as written. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second. Trustee Ramondo? Any questions or comments? All right, we'll vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morel?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Great. That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. On to committee reports. What committees have met?
Communications met.
Yeah. Would you like to say a little bit about our meeting?
I'll say a little bit, sure. We had, we had a conversation that addressed some issues that have arisen in our district around DEI and incidents, and we were, we had big discussion on what we do to support DEI and our values as a district, how we can talk more about those values, put them front and center so that everybody knows that we, we're in public education because we do truly believe it is for everybody, no matter, I like to say, no matter your flavor, but no matter your color, your race, your ethnicity, your sexual orientation, gender, et cetera. And just making sure that we talk more about that and make sure that is something that we all understand. We also went through the communications plan with Holly Brooker and the transition, and just drilled down into some of the details of what's going to be coming up as we know that our communications plan has to continue to unfold as we move into the coming school year. Anybody can add to that, but...
Sure, yeah. So I just want to add that we've circulated the first draft of the board communication by email, which was what, was one of the recommendations that we've learned from that survey that was done, that most people read email and prefer email. And we propose a monthly communication so that there's just a more constant flow of updates coming to people into their inboxes. So certainly this value statement was something we thought was important to reiterate, and we also sent around the content to the board for, for you to review it. I see here that there's a discussion of that noted, so I just wanted to make sure we held space for that. President Bishop?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear those last few words that you said.
Actually, I called you President Bishop. I'll reiterate it.
You can call me Madam President.
President, Madam President, if you would like. I just wanted to make sure we held space for that, because I see that here in the notes.
Yes, yeah, right. Thank you. So we did circulate the draft of our first monthly board update to the, to the trustees, and there were some questions about kind of where that came from and why we're doing that. You know, it's, I just want to give a little historical background for that. We, we first started talking about that idea when trustee Kevin Salem was the president of the board, and then again, when Emily Sherry was the board president, and now, I think that coming out of the pandemic, people were really feeling a little lost and uninformed. And then as we're moving into implementing some parts of our board resolution, people are also feeling confusion. I mean, it's been, it's very clear with the results of our most recent survey that people want more information from us, and they want it via email. That was, that was really clear. So we did draft that, and so I just wanted to give trustees an opportunity to ask questions and get clarification from the communications committee. Trustee Story?
Yeah, I asked for this to be put on because the first I had heard about the board monthly email sent, shout out, was to an, from the email to approve one. So I was like, wait a second. You know, we do work in our committees, do the work, but you're supposed to bring the work back to the board and discuss the stuff with the board, because I have some concerns about it being monthly, because the board committees usually do not meet during the summer. So how are we going to put out a monthly meeting? I, literally from 6:30 this morning, I've been reading the scope, 69 pages of PowerPoint and 39 pages of comments. So that was what I spent my day doing, trying to look at this stuff. And it's evident that people want the information emailed to them. But first, we have to come out and the board has to come to a consensus of what we're doing. I understand the communications committee has decided that, but that's the three of you. Then it has to come to the whole board. It's just like the policy committee. They do the work of it there, and then comes to the whole board to do it. So for asking for a, for me to approve an email that I have no idea about this, you know, because I even asked the superintendent McLaren, I said, you know, at agenda setting, I said, did we discuss this at the board table? And we can, remember, I look back in minutes asking about a monthly boards thing, and I don't recall seeing that. One of my concerns is about, I read what people want to know, the information that they want to know, you know, a lot of the stuff's music, fundraisers, dance, all the community events is what's been said that they want to know. A lot of the information that they're asking is not board information. It's school, principal, and district information. So we need to be very clear in putting out information that is our, what is board purview, and we don't overstep the lines of sending out district information or principal information or teacher information. This is something that, you know, we have to figure out, and going forward, this is where, you know, some of the thought processes that I just looked at, you know, I was looking at these that have come up to see this stuff.
Just to, I think, answer the question about how would, how would the monthly newsletter go out in the summer? First of all, the monthly newsletter is based on the superintendent's overview of of the monthly board meetings, and it's really about what we're doing in the board meetings. It's not about, you know, teachers or what's going on in the schools, unless it's something that we're discussing specifically at the board table. So, if you, if you take a look at the monthly email, it reflects superintendent McLaren's monthly update that she sends to all contacts internally. And then the other piece about being able to kind of keep the flow going through the summer, we have contracted with BOSI's and we have Holly Brooker and her team to enhance our communication. And, and, you know, if, you know, I have a feeling that communications committee, I mean, I know that the communications committee is very dedicated to this work. And we really want to enhance communication, we've heard it loud and clear.
We've heard it loud and clear, but again, you just said we have a BOSI's person, but the commu, this is the board communication corner, the board. This isn't the BOSI's communication person putting it together. So, this has got to come from the board. This is what I'm, more, if I had more information about what we're giving out or, you know, that's what I'm grasping at. You know, what is the board going to communicate, because?
Were you trying to say Holly is there to help us? I mean, the board, the communications committee was putting together the email, and then Holly was, Holly polishes a lot of our communications for us, and then the board would review and approve it. So, it would be the communications committee putting together the crux of what the work the board is doing. I mean, I think in the summer, we only have one meeting in July, but there would, there would maybe still be enough to put something out. I mean, there's no specific length that it has to be.
I, I'll call you in a second, trustee Jerome. And just keep in mind that the committees are formed at REORG, and sometimes they change and sometimes they don't. I mean, sometimes the same trustee is on a committee for many years in a row. So, trustee Jerome?
Yeah, I guess I don't understand what the problem is. Communication, we've been criticized continually over since, certainly since I've been on the board. We are definitely basing this on what, working with the superintendent, we're within our purview. We are stating values, which we've stated in our, in our, within our mission and vision, just bringing them to light again in the hopes that we can remind people of our values in this district. I understand that you personally may not feel like it's representing you as a person on the board. I do get that. But, you know, I guess I would put it to the whole board, to hear feedback from the whole board, if like, that may just be the case, you know? But I think we've tried to work very conscientiously to work within the guidelines of what are, what we are able to do and to give the public and our community and our staff and our students the more communication that they are asking for. So, yeah, I just, I'm not sure what the issue is.
Okay. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Just reading the comments on the survey, I felt like we heard the same things over and over again. And like, a message I got loud and clear is that we sort of like performed the act of like, acting like we care and acting like we're listening, and then sort of forging ahead with whatever our original plans were. That might have been more in reference to the previous board, but I feel like we want to convey that we are a new board, that we, we're not shying away from that or acting like we didn't hear that, like kind of calling it out and being like, we totally hear you and we want, you know, we want you to trust us again, we want you to come to public, be heard, we want you to email us back, you know, two-way, maybe email communication. And, you know, it's just, it was, it was like sad to read that so many times. So, it's like, we just don't want to feel like, even if they are able to give community input, that we're not just like, okay, great, we heard you, and like, now we're going to get back to our original business, whatever that was, you know? It has to have meaning. And I think there's something to be said for sort of just calling out what was said and what was clearly felt, and not just, you know, acting like we didn't hear it and saying, you know, we are different now and we're different people and we, you know, and just that we will take into considerations your feedback, big and small, and we're not ignoring you.
Any other comments? Trustee Lynch?
No, I just wanted to thank trustee Story for your questions, and it was no intention to not, to, you know, not bring this to the table. I think from where I sit on the committee, I had heard the same conversation, now informed by this survey, was about what are we doing beyond the quarterly newsletter? We don't, we don't have enough visibility. So, we talked about getting more visibility outside of the school because we didn't have people's email addresses. You may, you were actually part of some of those conversations in the interim role that you were playing on the communications committee. But we decided to ask for emails from the community, and we went purposely out and collected as many emails as we could. And it was actually trustee Goodrich who just asked recently, how are we communicating with these people and what are we sending to them? So I'm sorry that it wasn't well presented, but essentially what we're trying to do is communicate on a monthly basis with both our all-staff, our all-contacts internally and externally to those that, those that we have, and continue to invite people to sign up for email alerts. Because we can be, you know, as trustee Mitchell Morrell said, try to strive for more two-way conversation, but the format of the, of board meetings is just so limited. So it's very difficult for us to do more than just those quarterly newsletters. This is a monthly outreach effort. And then the, the hope is that we're really driving people back to the website, because it is the most underutilized resource that we have. I mean, it's packed with details. To your point about the questions from the, from many of the people who took the survey saying, I just want to hear about what events are happening or what's going on. Everything's on the website. It's hard, you know, to find it, then ask your business administrator, or your building administrator or your teachers, but it is there, you're right. And we're trying to just redirect people back to the, to the website as much as we can. So that's, that's the whole agenda of the board communications plan right now. And we've got the benefit of Holly Brooker, who's a professional PR person, who's also helping to develop a long-term and a short-term communication strategy for the superintendent to take up. And they're asking us for our guidance on that. So that's, our other role is in an advisory role, I would say, to you, superintendent McLaren. And that's, you know, both what the district can put out and then what the board can put out, and make sure that it's just complimentary, so that we're not, yeah, stepping on each other's communications. I guess that, that's how I would sum it up, if that's helpful.
Trustee Goodrich?
So, your point about driving people back to the website is, is great. I totally agree with that. I also, just, the, the public, this may be the first time they heard about the survey results. So, you may want to mention, are we going to have a presentation on that? So, let's, let's mention that here. We're going to have a presentation on the survey results. I guess, when, when might that happen?
It's, it's on our next March agenda, and I don't have the date in my head at the moment. Yeah, two weeks from today. So, March 19th, superintendent McLaren and trustee Jerome and trustee Lynch and I will be making a presentation together on the communication survey. And I just wanted to say something about the responses, the narrative responses, which are, you know, personal and will not be shared broadly. But we've heard a few people say tonight that, that overwhelmingly, people were saying that they felt uninformed and that we, you know, plowed forward and all that. But I want to say that there were also a number of responses that said that they were very well-informed and that they, you know, they, that people who were attending meetings or watching them at home or reading the minutes or reading our newsletters or whatever, were feeling informed. And then there was a smaller group of people who said, I did not feel informed at all, but that's on me, because I didn't, I did not, you know, pay attention. So, I mean, I think there was a variety of responses in terms of the level of information that people were receiving. And I think it also depends on how people receive information. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say overall, it's probably not realistic to expect people to watch the board meetings. That's just going to be such a small percentage of people. That's why we need things like the newsletter. Like, there just has to be multiple ways and really easily digestible ways. Like, watching the board meetings, I get it, if you watched them from day one, yes, you did know what was going on. But that is just such a rare few.
Trustee Story?
I want to address trustee Jerome, she goes, I don't understand what the problem was. The problem was that we didn't have this discussion that we just had at this table, the whole board, to have this, this thing about the email. I received this email saying, you know, here, we need to, here's an email that the communications committee is sending out. We need four people to send it because we want to send it out by Sunday. That, this, we needed to have this discussion. If the communication committee wants to do this email, the whole board has to be on board for this, to move forward on with it. That just, the communication committee can't just say, we want to do this and we're doing it.
Can I just respond? I'm not disagreeing, but here we are, having this conversation at the board table. Not a problem, right? What's the problem? We're talking about it now and we're getting it out there. I'm not, I didn't want to send it out without, that's why we sent it out for people to comment on, and you held us back, totally fine. Glad we're having the conversation now.
I didn't hold it back. It was that we, this discussion has to be done in public thing, for the whole board to have an open discussion. So that's why it cannot be done via email.
So, I'm wondering after this conversation, if we feel like we have consensus to move forward with this monthly email that provides our community with a board update? Can we, can we do that by a show of hands? Just a show of, we're not going to do a vote. Yep, everybody's good? Okay, great, super, thank you. Okay. And so we already mentioned the, the report out of the communication survey, which is March 19th. And anything else from the communications committee? Anything else from the communications committee?
The only other request, I think, is if you have other ideas for frequently asked questions about the building reconfiguration primarily and the transitions that the schools are making. That's another upcoming product that the district will be sending out and hopefully can be utilized by, you know, everybody who's interfacing with the community, PTAs and others, so that we all have a sense of how to support people who are looking for more answers to these questions, if, if the website isn't sufficient.
Thank you. Trustee Goodrich?
So I'm not sure I, so on the frequently asked questions, great idea. So that's going to be on that optimization page? Okay, it'd be a separate section? Yeah?
Yes, yep. Okay, any other committee reports? I just, I'm just going to say one more thing about legislative action. Superintendent and trustee Lynch and I did meet via a Zoom meeting with Senator Hinchey and a few of her staff. It was a great meeting. She's really revved up about trying to come up with a more, I guess, appropriate budget. And, and also had a lot of guidance for us in terms of how we might begin to pursue the EV bus conversation in a, in a different way. But I think, you know, for us, it's first things first, let's get through the budget. And I also encourage people, our assembly persons and our senators do hold, I think what they call community office hours. Excuse me. So, last Saturday, I did take the opportunity to go to Assemblyperson Schresta's office hours. And I just had a, you know, you have 15 minutes to talk about whatever it is that, whatever issues are important to you. So I spoke about the budget, and I spoke about EV buses and our whole issue about that. And, and I spoke about housing. Almost more importantly, I spoke about housing as it, as it has impacted us in terms of our enrollment. So, I encourage anyone who, if you can find that, it's on, it's on, it's all over the place. You can find it on their websites. So we're all set on committee reports? Trustee, trustee Goodrich?
So, I just want to reiterate that our superintendent and our school board president are doing a great job. And if you out there think that we're not being transparent, we are. We don't have hidden meetings. This is it, all right? This is where the decisions are made. And it may seem like it's pretty boring, but this is it, you know? And if you think we're doing a lot more behind the scenes, we're not. So, I just want to reiterate, and these two ladies are doing a great job.
Thank you. Any old business? Trustee Story? No? Any old business? Anyone? Okay, new business? Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
I'm wondering, in the next, like, year, or I don't really know when, if we should come up with a Plan B if the bond doesn't pass multiple times? I'm just wondering what our plan is in that situation? If, you know, obviously we have, coming up with the plan to fully centralize, but should we come up with a plan for if the bond doesn't pass and we are not able to fully centralize? I don't know if that's an RFI or how to phrase that exactly.
I think that the, the role of the board is to support the resolution and work to help the bond get passed. That's sort of our job as the school board. And the way that I imagine it happening, I've never really been a part of a school board before with a big bond like that, is that if it were to fail, that's when the plan, the next plan gets, you know, yeah, yeah. Because the goal is for it to pass and, you know, and I think that's sort of like manifesting our destiny is to get it to pass. And then, if it doesn't pass, then we kind of take it from there. Trustee Story?
And when it comes to the board, the bond vote and like the budget vote, it's the responsibility of all of us, the trustees, all board trustees, to go out and support the bond vote when that comes up and to support the budget vote. That is your job as a board officer or board member, to support all of these decisions that the board is making and to go out in the public and to get support for that.
Somebody on the other end of the table have a hand up? Yeah, trustee Lynch? Oh, oh, Megan? Trustee Ramondo?
I was wondering if it would be time to bring our, to bring Bob in from Super eval and do a training with the new trustees, since we'll have to be doing evaluations soon. Thank you.
She, trustee Ramondo just suggested that we arrange to have our representative from Super Eval come in, and that's the company that the- And that's the company that, the, the program that we use to evaluate our superintendent. And it's a, it's a brief training. It's a pretty easy to use format, so, but it's, it's good to hear from him. And he had to come work with us for a short training before a board meeting. Or did he do it? It was before a board meeting, not during a board meeting? Yeah, so we did a tiny retreat. Yeah. Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, I had an idea and I was just wondering if we could find time to talk about it at the board, at a future board meeting. But one of the things that I'm excited about or wanting to work towards during this transition phase is ways in which we can bring the Woodstock and Bennett elementary schools together in '24 and '25. I think it's really important because one of the things that resonated with me in the conversations last year and over the summer, and even in the Talon, the high school newspaper, they were articulate about this idea that part of the reason we wanted a, you know, a central campus was to help de-stigmatize, you know, where kids come from, right? And thinking about building a culture of one school. And I really worry now that we have, in this implementation plan, created a situation where our youngest kids are not going to meet each other until sixth grade. And I think we have a responsibility to do better by them and to think about ways in which we can support one central campus idea for the next few years until the Woodstock kids and the Bennett kids come together. And I had a couple of ideas about that, but I just wanted to open it up for a discussion and see what's possible at a future board meeting.
Great, thank you. Trustee Jerome?
I'm confused. Is there, is dissenting opinion not allowed on the board? Do you all have to be in agreement? I don't understa, I'm just talking about the, the idea that some of us may not support, you know, closing Woodstock. And are we obliged to say we are if we're not? I guess I'm just confused there.
Yeah, in our, I mean, it's in the board norms and in, in our code of ethics that once, I can't find it, it's just like, but it is, once, once something is, is resolved or voted on, even if you don't support it, even if you voted no on it at, at a board meeting, it is expected, all right? Respect and abide by each decision of the board as a whole, regardless of one's personal vote. So, I mean, I guess you don't have to necessarily be a cheerleader, but you should certainly not be, you know, out, out there trying to, you know, get people, yeah, undermine the.
I understand, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other new business? Trustee Goodrich?
So my view is, my personal view, and I could be wrong here, but it, the closing of Woodstock's going to be a bond and it's going to be a proposition and the public's going to vote on it. And our job is to make sure they have accurate, informed information on how to make the best decision on that. Outside of that, I, I'm neutral. That's my, that's my personal view.
Okay. Any other new business? Okay, I'm getting a neck workout tonight. Requests for information from the superintendent. Trustee Story?
Can we get what our participation rates are for the free lunch and breakfast that we get?
Question?
We're just not clear. Is that those people who are taking adv, do you, do you know who's, I know it's for everybody, right? But do you know who is taking advantage of it or?
We certainly know who is getting a complete meal as opposed to students who may buy à la carte or just buy snack or, so yes, we do track all of our purchases.
Any other requests for information? Trustee Story, would you like to make a motion to adjourn? May I have a second? Trustee Jerome and trustee Lynch? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you all on March 19th.